Start our Tuesday, August 4th, board meeting. We'll start with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Zan Ojero, Commissioner.
Annabel Hadamia, Commissioner.
Joe Purvey, County Administrator.
Alyssa Rache, Public Information Officer.
George Looney, Public Works.
Charlie Fountain, Public Health.
Danielle Brown, Health Department.
John Serna, Member of the Public.
Morning.
Morning.
Looks like Julie Jackson is with us.
Hi, I'm from the Public Services thing.
Good morning.
And this is Tino Brax, also with the Public Services.
Morning, Tino. Okay. Next up is announcements. Are there any announcements that we need to know about? Hearing none. We'll go to comments from the public. Hearing none. Go to item number three, review and approve our agenda. Are there any additions or corrections?
Nope.
I don't have anything.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item four, Chair Decisions. There have been no Chair Decisions since our last board meeting. So, item five, 5.1, EOC update. Usually Brian Lee starts us off. I didn't hear him yet this morning. Are you there, Brian? All right. If Brian joins us later, we'll plug him in. Why don't you start us off, Charlie? You're on mute, Charlie.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, we're doing a lot of EOC training this week. So I think Brian and Dave are probably tied up doing that training. It's going very well, getting people really ramped up in the event that either we need to restart the EOC for an upswing in the current emergency or heaven forbid, something else happens and we need to deal with two problems at once. And so, my experience yesterday, and Danielle was there for a separate session, she can weigh in. People were really engaged and I think taking this very seriously. It's good to see the dedication. As far as the operations section of the response here at Department Operations Center, we're waiting on our figures from overnight. But as of yesterday, 139 cases, another 18 presumptive. So, we keep ratcheting up little by little. No large outbreaks, no significant point source growth. We keep seeing basically the results of small social gatherings and groups of two or three. There's some advantages to that. We don't have these large point sources, but it makes interruption and tracing and disruption of outbreaks somewhat more difficult because we have scattered spread throughout the community and different communities within our municipalities. We're in very active discussions, as we have been, with OSU. Continue liaison with them daily. Organized meetings a couple of times a week with their planning and opening group. They remain extremely flexible, responsive to current circumstances, and very open and transparent in their work with us. And their planning online is all available to the public. School reviews are also going very well. Significant number of schools have engaged our planning team. We've done several outreach to administrators and superintendents, reminding them of the process, giving them updates as new state materials have been prepared and new metrics and new guidance. Modified guidance has gone out. We know they are getting that from Department of Ed, but we're making sure locally that they have it and they know who to connect with here as well. We're also actively working this week to fill all five of those emergency hire investigator positions and the two interns. So we finished out processes late last week, middle of last week, with Human Resources and bringing those folks on. Right now, we've got equipment standing by for those folks from IT. So everything is in place to get those folks on board and get them up to speed and really enhance that capability. I think that's all I have for now. So I'll turn it over to Danielle unless there's questions.
I can wait for my question if you want, or I can quickly. I just wanted to know about OSU's public health group. You're engaged with them?
We engage with both the Student Health Services and the Director of Student Health Services. It's one of the co-leaders of OSU's overall COVID planning. We also have direct contact with the Dean's Office and the College of Public Health and Human Sciences. OSU is pretty well internally coordinated on this. And so, there's a lot of communication going on within the OSU system. But we work with both. We're working directly with the college on internships and their issues. And then with the overall planning team around academics and athletics and overall university planning.
Roseanne?
I would like to know whether or not we've had any improvement in our testing regime since the slowdown began a while back.
We're still looking at, you know, four to five days in most test turnarounds. The state remains significantly faster. Most tests within 48 hours. But their volume is lower. They're doing more selective testing than the commercial labs. So we're better than we were, still not quite where we want to be.
Thank you. Glad it's better.
All right. There's no more questions for Charlie. Danielle?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. So as Charlie talked about, we are moving from the fully activated or partially activated Emergency Operations Center into the Department Operations Center under the Health Department. That transition will probably officially happen late next week or beginning of the following week. We have, we're following the same ICS-NIM structure of the reporting structure to implement the DOC, but it will be within the Health Department rather than across the entire county. We still have several projects that we're working on, including working with the city around the homeless encampments and how we're going to approach and support those individuals. Charlie talked about the school reopening plans that are in full bloom and the contact tracing staff that we're, the emergency hire staff that we're hiring in order to better support the communicable disease team. I will echo what Charlie said in terms of the EOC training. We're doing the three-team EOC orientation and training. That seems to be going very well, agreeing with what Charlie said. Staff are very interested and excited to participate in the EOC. I think Lori Starha and Matt Weatherall did a good job of setting up those three teams and identifying folks that are going to fit well into that EOC structure. So I'm really excited to help that move forward and I think that will help the EOC structure and the DOC structure as we shift from an EOC to a DOC and hopefully can prevent shifting back the other way. But we will have those plans in place if and when we need to.
Great. I'm glad you're scaling up on the news. East Coast has hurricane and flooding and Southern California wildfires. And so, and then having to deal with the pandemic at the same time. So getting a more robust EOC teams, I think, is pretty much essential. I'm glad it's going well. Any questions for Danielle? Okay. Okay. Brian Lee is supposed to be joining us soon. Are you with us, Brian? No. Give him a minute. Okay. Well, I guess tagging on to Zan's question, Charlie. Is there, do you have hope that the testing turnaround times are going to improve? It seems like we've been kind of stuck at four or five days average turnaround time, which is, I think, close to twice as long as we would like.
Yeah, we know that our local lab, Willamette Valley Toxicology, was putting on some extra staff, weekend staff, increasing their capability. The others are national labs. You know, they're really subject to a lot of other pressures and strains, you know, depending on their chain of labs and their corporate structure. So we do feel that locally, working with Willamette Valley Toxicology, we know that there's some efforts down in the Lane County area to add some other private lab capacity. So we always have hope, but yeah, we seem to be sort of in a pattern now. We're hoping for better.
Is it the Abbott Lab platform that's the quick turnaround?
So there's a couple, yeah, there's a variety of testing regimens going on. I'm not absolutely sure what Abbott has. Going on in their capability. You know, there's a few different methodologies and some of them are looking at some opportunities to provide sort of real-time clinical turnaround and in-house testing. There's a lot of innovation going on right now. I've got to say, you know, even where we are right now with testing accuracy and testing availability, back in February, March, it was almost unimaginable to have this level of capacity within the timeframes we've got. So things are moving really fast. I have not spent much time in the last couple of weeks really studying the current testing technology because it's really moving pretty fast. And that's just not where I put my energy in the last couple of weeks.
Yeah. On our senior leadership call yesterday, Charlie was at EOC training, so he didn't get to be there. Tom King for the Health Centers did talk about there being some new testing technology, point-of-care testing technology that Dr. Bradford and her team are looking at and potentially going to purchase with some of the Health and Human Services funds that came from COVID, for COVID testing to the clinic. So they're researching that and there will be more information coming out. But they're continuing to look at all of those changing, updated processes.
Okay. Thank you. Brian Lee, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Why don't you go ahead and finish up the EOC report?
Yeah, absolutely. So the main thing that we've been focused on is helping the Health Department get their Department Operations Center set up and running. So we are going to meet here later this week and early next week to kind of formalize that and get a solid training plan together. And then the other piece on the EOC side, we are really focused on the EOC training. Joe, Matt, and Lori kind of put together those three EOC teams. We had two teams come through yesterday for tabletop exercise. It went actually very well. People were well-placed. People seemed very engaged. So we're really happy about that. And we have another group going through tomorrow morning. So again, we're really happy about that so we can get some relief. And I believe Lilia's group also, up at the JIC, was also very engaged. So we're really happy with that progress. And other than that, we're just kind of monitoring the hospital data in terms of their census reports and any sort of impact related to COVID-19 on the hospitals. We are also planning on doing our face covering distribution. Right now, we have it down for August 22nd. So that's Saturday, August 22nd, from 9:00 to noon. And we'll have various locations published here soon. We're trying to make sure we have enough spread out throughout the county. Go ahead.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Annabel?
Brian, I don't know if this falls in your bailiwick or not, but we did talk a little bit earlier about multiple things going on that are impacting not only this, but other issues. And then wildfire was mentioned. And so I'm curious as to how much conversation is going on with Department of Forestry to make sure that we're not hit by another surprise from wildfire getting in the middle of this.
To be honest, I haven't talked to ODF in the last month or two. I talked to them, gosh, now it seems like so long ago, back in late February, early March. And we were just mainly doing the information share. And they showed me their district and their coverage and everything else. And we discussed the wildfire season and evacuation. The other thing we've been doing towards wildfires specifically is with Red Cross. So we've been engaging them a lot in just having dialogue around COVID-19 and how we would do sheltering and evacuation centers and all of that. So we're keeping those conversations alive. We sort of just re-engaged in it. ODF, as well as State Fire Marshal, put out some information that August is looking particularly bad
Yep.
for fire season, mainly in central and eastern Oregon. However, we're, obviously, we've seen a lot of high temperatures. So we're still very concerned about that. There's been several smaller kind of brush fires or grass fires that have been put out by Corvallis Fire Department and some of the volunteer fire departments pretty quickly. So we're happy about that, but we are still very much concerned about the risk of wildfire, as well as then the sheltering impacts and evacuation impacts after that, especially with COVID-19. So we are very much aware of it and kind of re-engaging our partners right now before fire season really kicks off here later this month and into the fall.
Also add, as part of the operations section planning that we did under the EOC, we did create a sheltering plan for the possibility that this would happen, that there would be some sort of secondary emergency during COVID that we would need to address. So we do have a draft at plan specific to sheltering for a secondary emergency should that come up.
Great.
That's good.
And along those lines, with ODF, the Willamette District has a new leader, I think, Michael Urin. And it seems like it might be nice to make that contact to get to know each other.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I will definitely reach out.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. Last up for the EOC is our money guy, George Looney.
Good morning, all. This is reviewing the expenses for the week of July 24th, which was a week that we actually met twice physically. So expenses within the EOC were up slightly. It was a much smaller staff, so not terribly significant. Again, the majority of expenses continue to be outside payroll for the, excuse me. I should start that sentence over again. The majority of our expenses are still personnel-related, especially outside of the EOC. People working on those types of activities, but from their normal work environment. There were no expenditures for over 3K and no additional contracts or amendments for that week, although we were in the process of starting a contract that you're going to see next week, which is for some software that, if I get this right, and Lilia or Alyssa could correct me, but I believe it's to help us with the monitoring and tracking of social media activities. And that contract is going to come in at a dollar under $10,000, so $9,999. You'll see that on the cost report next week. I believe it'll be, you'll see it at least listed as a contract. The other real changes to this spreadsheet that you got this week were the inclusion of the grants from Business Oregon, from the Oregon Public Health, and then the CARES Act amount that we talked about last week. So that's really the only changes. And I know you've heard this three times, but I'm going to jump in and add my support to. I was at both of the trainings yesterday and I also agree that they went over very well. People were engaged. I was working certainly with the finance folks and was very pleased with the folks that I had the opportunity to work with. So I'm very encouraged with where we're going forward.
All right. Any questions for George?
Can I chime in on that, the contract that George was referring to? The social media monitoring software. It was, the company I believe is called Melwater. But the idea there is that that will save us time, especially on the JIC, social media monitoring side of things. It's for a year contract. And the idea there is that we can really take a huge lift off of just the amount of staff time that's needed to just literally watch social media comments. Normally, you could lean on some other partners to help us monitor social media if this was a more localized disaster. But since, of course, everyone's affected, there is no capacity at the state level or across our normal virtual support system to help us social media monitoring. So we're sort of on our own. What we've also found, and I'm sure Lilia can chime in on this, is that, to no one's surprise, I'm sure, social media is our number-one engagement tool and where we're seeing most of our interactions and hits and where people feel like we are either attentive and responding and transparent or, of course, not divulging any information and not transparent at all. So our ability to respond or at least monitor what sort of social media discussions are happening is super important so far for our public engagement side and public perception. So this software will help significantly and save so, so, so much time and staff dollars. So we're really looking forward to start using this and get this going. It's been checked out by Grace as well. So she gives a thumbs up on the IT side. So I'll let Lilia chime in if she's on.
Thanks, Brian. You gave a great overview. And yes, I think in addition to the piece about the staff time that'll save us, I just wanted to add that we actually were able to secure this at 50% of the regular costs. So we did see a very great discount of the software due to our needs.
Great. Any other questions or comments on the EOC report?
Just one. I know that the JIC has been one of the hard-pressed units of our response to this pandemic. And it was a bit more difficult to get together three teams for that particular unit. Has that eased up a little bit? Have you figured out how to put together a rotation that can reasonably allow you all to get some respite at the same time getting the work done?
Yeah, thank you for asking, Commissioner. As I think Brian spent some time on chatting about it, as well as George and others, the EOC has been investing in training and standing up multiple teams. And the JIC has been part of that effort. I've been working closely with Matt and Lori and Brian to develop those teams. I think the difficulty that the JIC struggles with that the EOC hasn't struggled with is that EOC has been able to kind of scale up and down. And the JIC has primarily been full steam ahead since March. Thought that we would be able to scale down a bit, but, you know, we just weren't sure what we were going to see over the summer. And so we haven't been able to scale down as much. So to that end, knowing what we may face this fall, I have brought in a group of individuals yesterday that participated in EOC training, came upstairs, participated in a JIC tabletop. Next week, they'll be having an additional, I think probably half-day training with myself and John Royak, who's the JIC Operations Section Chief. And then the week after that, they're going to have a go-to meeting, training with the respective section chiefs where they'll be assigned to information gathering, information distribution, media relations liaison, and hoping to activate the two teams beginning October, oh, no, I'm sorry, August 24th. And I'm hoping that through August and September, we can get our second team up and running really smoothly and then work to launch our third team. It's difficult to try and implement developing screening and then actually perform the training while we're continuing to respond. On any given day, we might get new guidance issued by the governor or there might be other factors in our world that are just going to cause a greater need for us to engage with the community online. So we've been working really diligently to get our documentation and our cross-training plans finalized so that we can embark in this really next kind of three-week intensive training period to bring on that second team. So, yeah, I have a lot of hopes. I think it went great yesterday. Everyone was really engaged and maybe not excited to be here, but understanding the importance of the work and excited to contribute to that. So, yeah.
Thank you. I've just been aware that your team has been full steam for so long and it's, we don't get reports from you as frequently as from the rest of the EOC team. And I appreciate knowing that you are getting some backup moving forward.
Absolutely. And I'd be happy to, as time allows and, you know, per Joe's direction, provide more timely updates from the Joint Information Center as part of the EOC update.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lilia. Any other questions or comments? If not, we are right on time. I'm so proud. 5.2, Coronavirus Epidemiology, Peter Barnworth. Are you ready, Peter?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Great.
Let me switch my camera to my livestream. Now, hello, Commissioners, everyone else. Nice to see you today. If possible, I could share my screen. I don't know who's running this. Otherwise, whoever's running it can put my slides up on the screen.
Hi, Peter. I think Erica is going to be able to make you presenter this morning.
I'll wait just a minute for that to happen. I've got two screens and I'm looking away from my camera right now, which is, here we go.
Thank you, Erica.
Thank you, Erica. Can everyone see the screen? It should say Benton County COVID-19 projections.
Yes.
That's good.
Great, thank you. Thanks again for having me here today. So I've been working on updating projections for Benton County at many different levels, from low levels to this kind of broad overview. to this kind of broad overview that I'm going to give you today. I want to confirm that or reaffirm that these projections are intended to be used for advanced planning and discussion. They're not predictions and should not be used to make policy decisions in isolation. But hopefully, it will give some information and some ideas on what may be coming so that our policymakers can plan. I gave a presentation a couple months ago to the board using a similar model, but I've updated it a little bit. I wanted to quickly discuss the updates to the model so you understand why the outputs are a little different. Our baseline county population is 65,000 people. So that does not include, you know, the people who live here during the school year but who don't live here during the summer. So that, for example, right now, we're operating on the assumption that there are about 65,000 people currently residing in Benton County. Unlike the old model, I've split the population into different age groups because as we've learned about the coronavirus and COVID-19 illness outcomes and even potential infectiousness can be very different for different ages. Hospitalization rates are very low for pediatric, for 0 to 17, and much higher for 65-plus, as an example. And also, we know in general and especially in our community, our mixing rates are different across different age groups. When OSU is in operation, we have a lot of people aged 18 to 29, but they may not mix as thoroughly with our general population as we might expect in a community that doesn't have college. As before, the model incorporates the ability for local policy interventions to be instituted or lifted based on ongoing observed COVID-19 prevalence. This represents a responsive approach to epidemic conditions. So that, for example, if our, in these models, if a certain number of infections are observed, then policies can be instituted that would lower the epidemic pressure.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. So, you got my thoughts back. Oh, yes, if the number of infections increases past a certain point, then policy interventions could be instituted that would lower the reproductive number and slow the growth of that epidemic. And those interventions would then be lifted once observed cases fall low enough. In terms of the specific projections that I'll present today, all three projections assume that on or around September 21st, about 15,000 individuals will be integrated into the geographical Benton County community. Most will be college-age. Some are in the older age range to represent staff and professors, et cetera, who are part of our community but may live in other counties and don't have a reason during the summer to visit the geographical Benton County community. Based on estimates of infection rates out of these 15,000, assume that approximately 15 of them have an active COVID-19 infection. So adds a little bit, adds a number of new infections to our community, kind of all at the same time. Now, I'll present three different scenarios. In the baseline scenario, the Benton County community has the ability to use policy and interventions to respond to increases in COVID-19 infections. Let me give an example of that. For example, we've seen that in Umatilla County and in Morro County, there's been a return to post-home orders or Phase 1 because of the high community prevalence in those counties. That could be an example of a policy or an intervention. Another one might be, so if you've seen the Oregon Department of Education guidelines, once schools reopen, they will be able to continue operating unless community observed prevalence exceeds 30 new cases per 100,000 people over the course of a week. That would also be, for example, a policy and intervention would be a school closure. Another scenario, a worst-case scenario, and what I believe would be a counterfactual scenario would be what I call a no-policy scenario, in which policies and interventions are not used regardless of the level of infection. And I included this mostly to demonstrate the importance that our policymakers continue relying on the tools that we have to slow the epidemic as the epidemic pressure continues through the winter. And finally, the public health champion scenario, in which additional community and public health efforts reduce the spread of disease. This would include very high compliance with face-covering guidance and requirements. It would include adequate resources and capacity for contact tracing and case investigation, and also the public's commitment to support that by, you know, participating in these case investigations, providing contacts, quarantining themselves, et cetera. Are there any questions about the three different scenarios?
Zan?
I have one question, not about the scenarios, but about the basis for assuming that 15 of those 15,000 newcomers to the community will be infected.
Yes. So, you know, it is a, an assumption. So 15 out of 15,000 is about, well, that's about 1 out of 1,000, right? That is a fairly low estimate of maybe what prevalence might be in September. But it also assumes that people with active infections or with symptomatic infections, people who have fevers, et cetera, will not be coming into the geographical Benton County community. So these 15 would basically be people who are infectious but don't really know it. And so, you know, under these, under this model, we could add 100 new cases or five new cases. And 15 is kind of a central tendency, a central estimate of what we might expect.
Okay. Have you done model runs with other estimates or just this?
Yes, I have. I don't have those necessarily presented today, but I can certainly provide those as well with different levels. And I was actually thinking it would be useful to, so I appreciate that question. It allows me to talk a little bit about the structure of the models. Models in general tend to look at averages, look at the most expected scenarios. They don't generally incorporate rare events, like a super-spreader event or a major outbreak. And this model, I can introduce those by fiat and to kind of explore what would happen under, you know, under, for example, let's say even without these 15, let's say then there's a, you know, an event where someone happens to be highly infectious and they infect 50 other people. We can explore what it would look like moving forward from that, from that point forward. And so I can certainly do things like that. And I was thinking about preparing one to provide, at least to the EOC, and then maybe decide if they can just provide that to the Commissioners or if you want to talk through it in another work session.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the model produces a number of different statistics, projections, daily active infections, so that's kind of how many people have a current infection. And when we speak about epidemiology, we really talk about infections as the ability to infect someone else. This does not take into account lingering effects of a COVID-19 infection. We know that there are people who feel, you know, fatigued or weak or have a lingering cough that may last for multiple weeks or months. This is specifically people who, to our best medical knowledge, can spread the illness. Cumulative infections, to kind of see how many people over the course of the year would we expect to be infected by COVID-19. Daily new infections, this is a fairly important statistic because it shows the burden on our public health system as well as things like daily new infections play into metrics for school operations, et cetera. Model also produces a, kind of a unitless measure of policy intervention intensity, showing if there's a low intervention, a moderate, or a high intensity. Daily hospitalizations and cumulative deaths from COVID-19. So as we move into the actual projections, I want to highlight again, if you compare these with some of the past data, what you're going to notice most is that the daily hospitalizations and the cumulative deaths appear to be much lower than previous projections. And the main reason for that is this age group division. We know that hospitalization rate is not constant across these different age groups. Most, nearly all hospitalizations across the state of Oregon have come in the 65 and over age range, and very few have come in 0 to 17 or 18 to 29. So as we look at these projections, they now take into account that most of those hospitalizations are going to be among older age groups. And by recognizing that they don't mix evenly, having, for example, an outbreak in the 18 to 29 age community is going to cause some infections among the 65 and older, but not as many as in the previous, as basically the assumption of the previous model. So I guess to sum up, things are looking a little more, a little better compared to the previous projections in terms of very severe outcomes. Okay, so moving into the scenarios, I'll show three graphs for each of the scenarios and then a summary table. And I imagine that's where we can really start our conversation if you have other questions. So this is a baseline scenario for infections in Benton County with the ability of using moderate or, if necessary, high-intensity interventions. Call your attention to the vertical axis. This is the number of infections that actually exist in our community, not just the ones that public health knows about. So we've had, I don't know if I've seen the most recent update, but as I recall, there's about 140 total known infections from early March in Benton County. But we expect that the number of active infections currently is as many as five times as high as the number that we actually know about. And so that's why here we see in June and July, we're estimating, or the model estimates, about 100 infections are existing somewhere in Benton County. We may know about 20 of them at this time. I guess we're in August now. So as you can see, this scenario basically predicts that, for the most part, we stay constant throughout the winter. We don't have any really large consistent spike in infections. We also aren't able to bring it down to a much lower level. But we're able to moderate and keep the curve mostly flat. This, under this scenario, it requires the use of moderate interventions. The one that comes to mind is, based on these numbers, it's likely that we will observe more than 30 cases each week, 30 new cases each week, in which case schools would be closed. So that would be an example of a moderate intervention required to keep the prevalence from growing. Other moderate interventions may require, you know, a return to Phase 1 if we have a spike that we need to turn around or other restrictions based on recommendations from OHJ or other public health officials. Are there any questions about this graph?
Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, thank you. So let's look at projected hospitalizations. Again, there's a lot of possibility for variation, but most of the infections, according to the parameters in the model, which are based on the best data I could find for hospitalization rates by different age groups in Oregon, show that our hospitalization capacity is not really going to be taxed very strongly by, in the baseline scenario. And in fact, we've averaged between one and two hospital beds in our county over the past month or so. So so far, it accords fairly closely with what we've been observing. And all of the simulations estimate that we're not going to have more than about six or seven hospitalizations at one time, even throughout the winter. And for our, for cumulative deaths, the best estimate or the projection under the baseline scenario is about 35 excess deaths due to COVID-19 between June, this past June and next June. That's, you know, that's about three, an average of about three per month. And we are a little bit below that average currently. So based on, you know, where we actually are through August compared to the projection, this projection, I would say, so far, is looking a little bit higher than the actual reality. So we can move on to the next set of three slides is the no-policy scenario. So again, this is what could we expect if Benton County does not have access to policy intervention tools and can only rely on, you know, basically as much activity, economic, social activity as normal, maybe people making some personal decisions. But basically, if we did nothing and we acted like COVID-19 worked in our community. And you can see that the estimate of active infections is much higher than in the baseline scenario. I'm going to jump back to the baseline scenario really quickly just for visual comparison. Baseline scenario peaks at about 250 for the average throughout the course of the winter, whereas the no-policy continues growing throughout the winter and peaks at closer to 1,500 active infections in March. Certainly not a scenario we want to be anywhere near. And again, the purpose for including this is to demonstrate how important it is that we have a proactive approach and we don't just let COVID-19 move through our community without taking action. In terms of hospitalizations, as many as potentially 25 hospitalizations in February and March, which would severely tax our hospitals' capacity. Like I said, our hospitals are doing pretty well right now with one to two on average. But if they had to, you know, had to support 10 or more people at a time, it would be very difficult, I think, for their staff and their resources to do so. And for cumulative deaths, the baseline had a cumulative death of around 35. And in the no-policy scenario, the cumulative death rate would be up around 120, so about four times as high as in the baseline scenario. Are there any questions about these three slides?
No.
Keep going, Peter.
So looking, yes, go ahead.
No, there were not any questions, so.
Okay. So looking now at the public health champion scenario. Again, this envisions having really strong capacity for contact tracing, a lot of individual responsibility for, you know, compliance with face covering, physical distancing, limiting activity as much as possible, and cooperation from the public in our contact tracing and case investigation efforts. And again, I want to emphasize, when I use words like responsibility and cooperation, those are built upon a foundation of support. People can't cooperate with public health and exercise responsibility if they don't have access to the resources to do so and to keep themselves safe. So while it does involve a high level of individual choice, that choice is only possible if our government and our public health and our community makes it possible for everyone. So in this scenario, you can see pretty quickly, instead of kind of bubbling along at a similar level, it really drops down. And so I would say we are not currently in this scenario because I don't believe we are at an average of about, or in the best estimate of about 25 active cases. We could get here, you know, it's within the realm of possibility of getting into the green and being on the public health champion scenario. But I would not say that we are currently on this scenario based on these projections compared to our actual data. But should we achieve it, then we could see somewhere closer to a peak of about 75 cases throughout winter. And one critical point is achieving this much lower community prevalence can happen without requiring policy, additional policy intervention. So, you know, 75 active cases So, you know, 75 active cases at a time in November, that equates to fewer than 10 new cases a week for 100,000 people, which is, you know, which is that, that best, which is the, the goal, for example, for the Oregon Department of Education metrics. So this scenario kind of indicates that we can achieve this lower community prevalence without requiring exogenous policy interventions. The burden on our hospital systems would stay very low, and we would see a further reduction in expected deaths instead of about 35, somewhere, you know, closer to 20, perhaps even fewer than 20. So I have all this information summarized in the table, so, you know, we lose the time dimension, but we can look at some more data and kind of view it at the same time. In our baseline scenario, and I would say, from what I can tell from our actual communicable disease data, we are in the blue here. We, we are kind of on track for something like the baseline scenario this year. Fortunately, we are not on track for this no policies because we are making good decisions about responding when cases, case counts rise. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear that, that we're achieving our public health champion scenario at this point because it appears that our, our case counts are higher than what this would project. Under the baseline scenario, our peak infections would be about 200 at a time throughout the winter. Hospitalizations are about two at a, two at a ti, two at a time throughout the winter and cumulative deaths about 35, and it would require a moderate intervention throughout the winter. The no policies intervention has, you know, roughly four times, four to five times each of the statistics from the baseline scenario. And our public health champion scenario has roughly a third to half as many compared to the baseline scenario. And importantly, would require no policy interventions and therefore no, or less stress on our economy and our community. Okay, I would like to open it up to if there are any questions. I'd be happy to do my best to answer them.
Ozan?
I'm, I'm assuming that I'm not certain that we track right now the number of active infections over time?
Yes, we are, we are tracking the number of active infections over time. It's, again, it's, it's difficult to define. Are we defining it from an epidemiological standpoint, where an active infection is an individual who could reasonably be expected to infect someone else? Or is it someone with the virus in their system who are experiencing the effects of COVID-19, whether or not they have passed the infectious period? So these scenarios show, when we talk about active infections, we're talking about people who could reasonably be expected to infect someone else as opposed to people who are suffering from the effects of COVID-19.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes, I, I can, I understand the distinction. And so for, right now, for, for our purposes, for the health department, are we tracking the epidemiological definition of those that are contagious and can contribute to?
Yes.
Okay. And?
Yes, we are.
That, so we are tracking all of these outputs that the model predicts, but I, I was wondering whether we are doing so in any kind of a graphical way like the model data that's presented here, whether we have current trend data about infections per day or active infections over time?
Thanks, Dan. Yes, we, we actually are tracking that in a graphical way. We have a dashboard that public health is using to monitor. I've been in discussions with Lilia about, and the rest of the JIC, with about providing a public-facing dashboard with that local data. I see Charlie's on the line. There's some data in the dashboard that is sensitive and we don't, we wouldn't release publicly, so I won't show it right now because we're recording and this is a, a public, you know, public venue, but maybe Charlie and I can talk about putting together a dashboard that we can provide a VOC meeting on, on your schedule.
Thank you. That would be of interest.
Peter, if I might, this is Lilia. Just really briefly, Commissioner, the Joint Information Center has gotten a lot of feedback from the community in terms of data requests in our county dashboard. And so as Peter mentioned, we are working closely with Peter and the C D team to kind of meet those requests and those expectations. And so hopefully, we will have a publicly available dashboard in the near future.
Thank you. I know that we don't have the resources of the Tableau software that the state uses that make it much easier to aggregate this kind of data. And I understand that there are also those health privacy concerns, so appreciate your attention to this. I know there are lots of people that are very curious about having a better pulse on the local data. Can you tell me, Peter, when it comes to the public health champion scenario, the main differentiation there is that all of us as individuals are exercising the best restraint and care that we can?
So there, there are, thanks for that question. There are kind of a number of ways to incorporate these kind of thought experiments into the model. One would be to just kind of reduce the effective reproductive number, reduce the number of people that any given infected person would expect to spread the, the virus to. In contrast, the, the other way to do it is basically to say we are much more successful at identifying people who have an infectious COVID-19 illness. And so the public health champion scenario takes that approach. It says, absence, if, if you don't identify the infection, the infected person still can infect as many people as, as in the other scenarios. However, instead of catching only about one out of eight infections in our community, in the public health champion scenario, we successfully identify, I think I said, either three out of eight or one out of two. So either three or four times as successful in identifying and safely isolating or safely quarantining infections. And what that does is it takes, you know, all of your, sorry, I'm, just so I can make sure I'm showing things right, okay. It takes all of your transmission chains, which can spread through the community, and it takes out, you know, half of them. And so now, instead of spreading it with 10 chains, you're only spreading it with five chains. And then you reduce it that way. So what, what kind of what it assumes is that, you know, that our contact tracing team, we have the tools we need, we have enough people, we have enough time, you know, that our lab time turnarounds are fast enough so that someone is not waiting a week before finding out that they have a COVID-19 infection and are spreading it during that time. And then it also assumes that when we call a person, we say, we, you know, you've tested positive for COVID-19, we really need to know who have you come in contact with since, you know, your symptoms began or from two days before your symptoms began, that A, they have the trust in our local public health to provide us with that information, that, you know, if, for example, if they are at a workplace, that their workplace was doing contact logs and can provide us with that information, that hopefully they were exercising general caution and even before they felt sick, they weren't going to, you know, parties with 100 people, et cetera. So it, it really takes a wide range of individual and society-level responsibility and cooperation and kind of wraps it all into the assumption that if we do that, we'll catch three to four times as many cases as we would have otherwise.
So it's the best-case scenario?
That's what I would say, yes.
I'm assuming that the baseline scenario is being used now to project forward in terms of how many contact tracers we will need in fall and winter with that increase in population?
That, that is a, a good assumption. I, I wish I could say that we are using these scenarios at that point or for that particular purpose. I think right now, in terms of contact tracing and the staffing, et cetera, what we're doing is we're kind of doing an on-the-ground evaluation based on our resources and our caseload, like how many contact tracers do we need for a particular number of known cases in our community? And then we can kind of bring that together with our projections. But we're still kind of discovering, you know, fortunately for us, June and, and even parts of July, the number of new cases we were getting at a time and the number of contacts, especially of those cases, were pretty small. Now we're starting to see cases with wider spreads of contacts and our contact tracers are, are working more. And I think we're getting a better idea of what that limit is. And so Charlie, I know you're on the line, maybe that's a discussion we can have about using these projections to see if it can help us decide if our capacity is going to be enough or if we need to make adjustments.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Peter and Commissioner. We actually did look at, at these numbers and at what the, the difference in capacity between using part-time people from other programs versus full-time investigators that, that we had moved around elsewhere. And that was part of what led us to asking for these emergency hires and, and working towards greater full-time staff. So it's sort of, sort of a combination of both, where we're using real-time experience and learning more about the time commitment and what's needed as the, the number of contacts changes and the context of investigation changes. But we also did refer to these projections in looking forward at what we might need. So, you know, we, we could infer, at this point, when we get all these new folks trained up, we may be a little bit overstaffed, but looking at, at the projections, looking at the potential impact of the fall, we, we are thinking that we'll at least have a head start in any increase that may happen in the next three months.
Thank you.
I, I had a question, Peter. I didn't see anything in your assumptions about K through 12 schools coming back probably on a hybrid model. How do you deal with the K through 12 population?
Thanks for asking about that. So there, there are kind of a number of different dimensions or, or legs of that particular stool. So one is how does community prevalence affect K through 12 operations? The O D E guidelines say that with fewer than 10 cases per 100,000 people over a week, so 10 new cases, schools can operate fully. If there are fewer than 30, then K through three, remote and rural schools examples would include, basically, I think, any school outside of the city of Palomas, the city of Carvallos and North Albany, so, you know, Blodgett, Alsey, et cetera, those would be able to operate, as well as special programs for students who need to be in the classroom. That's at 30 new cases per 100,000. It's tempting to use kind of the shorthand of Benton County is pretty close to 100,000 people, so if you're thinking, you know, that's, that's a relatively safe first approximation, although I'm not sure how that would change based on our actual population, you know, because as we know, OSU creates these big population swings. So that's one piece, is will schools operate? Another piece is how might COVID-19 move within a school if a case were introduced? And I'm working with the Oregon Department of Education on modeling some of those potential dynamics. And then the third piece is how would K through 12 then impact community prevalence? This particular model assumes that it smoothes out a lot of those variations. So there, there's been some good modeling by the Institute for Disease Modeling in Seattle, has worked with Washington, State of Washington, and also State of Oregon, looking at that third question, how would K-12 operations influence community spread? And at this point, the model suggests, you know, kind of what you would expect. If you have a lot of this mixing, it will increase the potential of epidemic spread in a community. And on the other hand, if you want to limit that, you need to keep your community prevalence low enough because it's a strong feedback effect, I guess. So this, these models do not specifically look at that. I've been thinking a little bit about would it be possible to kind of combine those two and really have that feedback effect in these models? At this point, I, I don't actually, I'm pretty sure I don't have the processing power to do a model of that size, so I, I couldn't provide you with a more specific answer to that question.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Peter?
Well, Commissioner Malone, I would, I would like to say, you know, that's kind of my idea of the questions that arise around K-12, but that's just my thoughts. And so it seems like maybe you had, if you had specific thoughts or ideas either now or later that you wanted to share with me, that would be really helpful as I think about how to model K-12. So I didn't want to close the conversation, I guess. I wanted to say, I don't have a lot to add now, but I'd really like to hear what you have to say.
I appreciate that and really appreciate this update as we're still in the summer, but looking forward to the fall and with your modeling of the upcoming year, which is trying to deal with constituent questions and policy. It's nice to have a little bit more of a roadmap than, well, this is what we got this week and trying to remember what last week was like. So I think your work is very helpful on a lot of levels, but I really appreciate this kind of roadmap and showing that we have a lot of control over the outcomes. And I think that, that's a message that we need to continue to emphasize, that different outcomes will depend on our, our actions as a group. So thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, thank you for having me here today.
I do have one last little question, and I think it's for Charlie. Just for calibration purposes for myself, can you tell me about where we are in terms of active infections today or this week?
So let me look at, we haven't gotten today's numbers in yet. We had a little over 20 last week. Four yesterday, you know, so sort of on the same track that we were early in the week. You know, it's hard to tell where we will be, but that's, that's been our trend the last, last couple of weeks, so.
So that's the, that's the number of new infections per week, but how about?
Correct.
Or of active infections?
I'll have to check on that, Commissioner, and see what the, what the caseload that, that we're tracking. You know, it, it will track pretty closely just because of the imposed timelines.
Okay.
Of those, you know, there's the formulas around what, what is assumed about those infectious periods that?
Okay.
That Peter referred to, so that doesn't vary a great deal. It's really quite proportional to the number of, of cases. Since we've been on the same sort of very slow upward trend, we can assume that the, that the active cases will follow that, that same pattern.
Thank you.
But I can check on that.
That helps.
Well, thank you for your report, and we'll now move on to item 5.3, discussions, changes to disposal site and waste. Changes to Disposal Site and Waste, Solid Waste Advisory Bylaws. And that's Daniel Reddick. You want to lead off the discussion?
Hi, good morning Commissioners. I wanted to actually give Greg Verrett a chance to introduce this a little bit as well as he'd like.
Okay.
Thanks, Daniel. Yeah, just briefly, Commissioners, I wanted to set the stage. So Daniel, as you recall, Daniel Reddick has started work for Benton County back in January. In the past seven-plus months, he's started making really good progress in a variety of areas, which you're going to hear about today, a few different topics on your agenda. He's been moving a number of initiatives forward, developing relationships with the SWAC members, some of whom I think are joining us today, with Republic Services and with other entities involved in solid waste around our region. And he's also been working on developing a program plan for the solid waste program as it moves forward. I think he has spoken with you folks at one of my department head meetings, but this is his first more formal presentation to the board. So congratulations, Daniel. It's exciting times. And we're reviewing a few different things with you today. So the bylaws update is the first item. Then Daniel's going to give you a general update on a variety of solid waste topics. And then I believe later on your agenda, the Republic Services Annual Report will be presented. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel.
All right. Thank you, Greg. So I briefly wanted to just review some of the proposed changes to the Solid Waste Advisory Council and Disposal Site Advisory Committee bylaws that we have drafted. And we did pass these proposed changes over to county council as well to double-check, which were approved. And as well as SWAC and DSEC members recommended these changes as well. And essentially, the changes were largely a shift to reflect the change from the Environmental Health to Community Development Department of the program. So we just updated some basic language around that within the bylaws. But one of the largest changes in the, specifically in the SWAC bylaws, were the membership requirements. It was brought up early on when I started with the county, I think at the first SWAC meeting I joined, that the membership requirements were restricting participation in the SWAC membership overall. And basically, that's because the membership requirement is required geographic distribution of members specifically to different areas of Benton County. And the proposed changes in the new bylaws reflected a less strict geographic requirement for membership and a little bit of leniency there while still striving to represent a large portion of the county as best as we can within that membership. And I think that is probably the biggest change that we made besides updating basic language to reflect the shift to community development.
So.
And, sorry.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, just to sum up, we're looking for any questions you have. And then we've included a motion that would put this item on your next available agenda for approval of the revised bylaws.
I have one question.
Okay.
I know this discussion has been ongoing in the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for a long time, so I'm really glad to see this language and I think it's well-written in terms of trying to capture what the group is looking for. But given the next item on the agenda, the update in terms of focus of the program, the only thing I was wondering about is whether or not we might also want to consider a change in the name to the Solid Waste Advisory Committee if we're going to include Materials Management in the purview of the program and the council overall. So perhaps we could go on to the next agenda item and then consider that? Or how would you like to proceed from a staff perspective?
Well, I'll let Daniel address that question as well, but my perspective would be we may need to come back to that point as far as the bylaws. And that's fairly easy to do, I think, just update the name of the program in the bylaws once we've more formally adopted a change to the program name, if that's the direction the board wants to go. But Daniel, do you have other thoughts on that?
Yeah, we didn't discuss specifically changing the program name beyond how we wanted the public to perceive the program shift. And with that, we thought updating the website with solid waste and materials management would kind of help the public like awareness and understanding of the focus shift of the program. But other than that, we hadn't gone into how that would affect SWAC naming. So that, yeah, depending on how you all feel about that name shift, we can absolutely go back to SWAC and update that as well.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to forward the bylaw updates to the next available board meeting for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Next up, solid waste program updates. Are you going to start us off, Daniel?
Sure, yeah. And I do have a couple visuals that might be helpful if I can share my screen at all, but they are not necessary if that's not easy to do. All right. I think I got the sharing capability here, so I'm just going to pull up a couple slides. All right. I pulled up the slides, but for some reason, it's not showing up here. So I can go ahead and just continue. But essentially, what I wanted to share with updates involves that shift to Materials Management that I mentioned earlier. And I kind of wanted to highlight what that is. Essentially, the EPA as well as the Department of Environmental Quality have gone through kind of a shift in their solid waste programs and the way they're framing the way they manage solid waste. And essentially found that a lot of the impacts of solid waste are part of the life cycle of those materials as opposed to just the disposal or the end of life of those materials. And a shift to a Materials Management focus of this program will help us have a larger impact on, or help us reduce impacts in a larger way of those materials that are indeed making it to landfill or being recycled or composted. So essentially, it's taking a more kind of holistic approach to how we run the program in terms of taking into account the life cycle of materials. And there's kind of a handy graphic here, make it a little bigger, for the life cycle of materials that is on the EPA website. But essentially, it covers everything from extraction to manufacturing to transportation to use and then disposal, when before we were just covering the management of the end of life of that material. So it covers a little bit more and we're hoping to essentially reduce the impacts of those materials in a larger way by shifting to Materials Management. That being said, what that shift functionally looks like for the program is essentially providing the public with more tools and more information around what goes into the full life cycle of those materials. So that way, we have a higher general awareness of the impacts of each material, as well as following the lead of EQ and EPA, who are releasing a lot of really great information about decision-making around materials that incorporates the life cycle and the impacts of those materials upstream before we dispose of them. Is there any questions about kind of how we're shifting to Materials Management and that focus change?
Well, I think it's a good approach and I appreciate kind of lining up what we're doing, what we should be doing with this program. So it seems good.
Excellent.
In terms of practical effect, Daniel, it will primarily affect education and outreach, I'm assuming, in terms of how both the SWAC and program staff from county and Republic Services talk about what recycling means and what materials are better or worse to use from the perspective of waste?
Yeah, that was certainly kind of how we had envisioned it, at least in the early parts of introducing this shift is really the education and outreach portions. It may also impact the types of programs that are being introduced, mainly for how those programs are kind of justified and the reasons why they're introduced might have more to do with the total life cycle of the waste that might be associated with those programs as well. So I would say primarily education and outreach is the main functional shift for the program.
Thank you.
And I would just add that the county doesn't really have a formal oversight role or regulatory role in these other areas of Materials Management the way we do for the solid waste disposal site and so on that's enshrined in our county code and in the franchise agreement.
Well, and this, I think would fit in well with our 2040 goals and hope there's good coordination there.
And are there any other questions before we go on to the next program update?
Doesn't look like it, Daniel, so go ahead.
Okay. So my screen is paused here. So the next program update is reviewing some of the potential changes associated with our Covered and Secured Loads campaign. And just some background on that. Sorry, this is still not updating my screen here. As part of that Covered and Secured Loads campaign, the, essentially what we're trying to encourage is for groups and individuals that are bringing waste to Coffin Butte or transporting any materials to the landfill, those loads are properly covered and secured to prevent any debris from flying onto the road, potentially causing dangerous road conditions, but also preventing pollution that could otherwise make it into the waterways. And this is something that is covered in our county code in terms of the landfill can adjust rates or rather provide a fee for loads that are not properly covered and secured. But we wanted to discuss some other rate change options associated with this campaign. We're planning to do a fair bit of education, including videos that we're producing with Republics to educate the public about how to properly cover and secure your loads. But we thought that it would be beneficial to review some of the actual kind of rate options and how that might affect the rate structure of Coffin Butte disposal. And when we discussed this with SWAC, the overall membership consensus seemed to be around the benefits of the discount structure. Essentially, people that are bringing waste to Coffin Butte would be more encouraged to participate if they were to get a discount when they do in fact have their loads that are properly covered and secured, as opposed to a fee structure which would essentially, you know, tack on an extra rate than what they were hoping to spend if they are not properly covered and secured with their loads. Trying to pull up this screen one more time here. Okay, there we go. So I've highlighted some of the basic options here. So again, SWAC initially was discussing this discount structure as potentially the best option over this fee structure, which would essentially, there wouldn't be any base rate changes, but there would be a tacked-on fee that would be determined upon whether or not their loads are covered and secured. But Republic was interested in this dual rate structure, essentially two separately published rates that are visible online as well as at the landfill, where you would, if your load has met the Covered and Secured Loads requirements, you would be able to go with a lower rate structure, which is published. And if you don't meet those requirements, you'd simply go with the higher rate structure. These all accomplish the same goals essentially, and the fees would look identical or the overall rates would look identical between them. But we were hoping to get some feedback on what approach might be the best option to continue exploring when we're discussing how the fee structure, the rate structure can change at Coffin Butte to better reflect the Covered and Secured Loads campaign. I will mention that all of these different rate structures are being utilized by counties in Oregon currently. The dual rate structure is something that Portland Metro uses, where they have both rate structures published at any given time, while some other counties are using discount structures, where you show up, all of the base rates are a little bit higher, but when you show up, you get a discount when you have properly covered and secured loads. And then some have no change to the base rate while they incur a fee if their loads aren't properly covered and secured. So I was hoping to get initial feedback and thoughts about these.
What, Annabelle?
Yeah, Daniel, one of the things I think that it's important is don't make this too complicated. It gets, it can confuse people, so any way to make it simpler would be great. I don't disagree with some of the discount issue, but if you put too many items on the list for somebody to choose from, it's going to become complex. list for somebody to choose from, it's going to become complex.
For me, I was leaning towards the discount structure. However, I think I am at a point where the dual rate structure sounds appealing, partly because that means that the information is out there, as you mentioned, Daniel, on the Republic website, perhaps on our website, everywhere, and there's less discretion that the operators at Coffin Butte have to exercise when they see a load come in. If it's properly secured and covered, it's one rate structure, and if it's not, it's the other, because otherwise it ends up putting more of an onus on those staff at the gate. And so it seems more complicated, but in another way, it might be much clearer.
I think that your comments are fine, Dan. What I was getting at is not getting too many items in there that the hauler has to look at and say, okay, how am I going to meet this? But I think what you're saying, just make it clear between one or the other.
Yes, and I think that the campaign that is envisioned right now, that the Solid Waste Advisory Council has been working on with Republic in terms of videos and written material and everything else, will make it quite clear what constitutes a covered and secured load versus an uncovered unsecured load. And I think having a dual rate structure might make it much clearer that we're treating them differently, and there's not discretion in the matter.
If I could jump in just for a minute, this is Julie Jackson. I also want to point out, the discount structure actually increases rates for those people who are properly covered in their load and kind of almost discounts the increase for those who aren't.
Right.
So it feels a little less fair to me to penalize people who are doing a good job.
I would agree.
Well, I guess my question, you've got several examples from around the state of different rates, how they approach this. What kind of feedback do you get as far as kind of clear understanding from the customer point of view and which approach is the easiest to enforce?
We haven't had a chance to connect with some of the groups that we have as examples in each of these different rate structures yet. That's one of our next steps as we explore these options more in depth, as well as we're working closely with Republic and Coffin Butte to see what rate structures would really make sense for that operation too, because we certainly don't want to slow it down or hinder their current operations in any way. It definitely has to work in concert with their current approach. So that is absolutely our next step, to do some more research in terms of which of these, what are the pros and cons of each of these rate structures as they're currently used elsewhere in the state.
Okay. I guess keeping in mind, it seems like the goal is compliance and which approach gets the best results. So anything else on the rate structure? So I guess get back to us on what you find out. It's a little hard. I appreciate Julie's comment about the discount maybe isn't the best approach, and so we've got the middle one, the fee structure and the dual rate to look at. But I would be curious what other operations do and which one gets the best results as far as people having secure and covered loads when they get to Coffin Butte. So I guess we're finished with that topic, but you are continuing, so.
All right. Thank you so much. And yeah, we will absolutely get back with you as we explore these options more. And there are a couple other details that need to be explored in terms of also the amount of rate change for incentives. So as we explore those and do some research with other counties, we'll include that in our research to see what is more effective. So next up, oh, sorry. What was that?
Go ahead.
Okay. So next up, we have the certification program for businesses. And this is a, I don't have a slide here, so I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing for the time being. This green business certification or business sustainability certification program is something that we came across in our subcommittee of SWAC, where we're doing research on different options for waste reduction. And we're looking at different examples that are going on in other counties as well as in our own, both in the public, private, and nonprofit sectors. And we came across an excellent example in Marion County, where they have an Earthwise program, which is essentially this green business certification program, and they work with businesses to educate as well as certify businesses that are doing well in a number of different sustainability categories, but at the heart of it is certainly waste reduction as well as energy savings and water savings. This is certainly an interesting program for not only from a solid waste perspective, but also from a water quality perspective. And we have been exploring this option with SWAC as well as Benton County Sustainability. We've also reached out to Corvallis Sustainability Coalition about their current programs that are similar and kind of have overlapped with this proposed program a bit. And we wanted to provide you some updates and some information about as we're exploring this program option. We're still in the very early stages. We're currently drafting out a plan for what it could potentially look like. Operationally, I've included some of those details on the agenda checklist for you all today, but this is a very early introduction and wanted to get some general input and feedback about what you think about having a certification program like this countywide. A little bit more background on Earthwise program is a countywide program where they work with the different municipalities within the county to function concurrently with any existing initiatives that they might have within each city. But they have a really good rapport with the different cities, and they're getting a lot of really good feedback from the business owners, where they're seeing cost reduction, but they're also seeing kind of business owners being celebrated and encouraged to go green in these ways, which is exciting. We did work a lot with Marion County to learn about their program, and they give us a ton of really great feedback, a lot of great resources that we could potentially use towards our program, so we don't have to recreate the wheel so much. And we're certainly off to a great start with kind of an introductory draft plan for this initiative. And do you have any questions about the program?
No questions, Daniel, but I'm all in favor of the program. Seems like it's timely with the challenges of recycling that have been with us the last several years from the change in what we were shipping to China. And so an opportunity to get some education and, you know, I like, I mean, I'm imagining the decal on the door of the business to show they're with the program. So I'm looking forward to hearing more detail. But any questions for Daniel?
I noted that in your, in the packet, it stated that you'd also been in touch with the Economic Development Office for Corvallis in Benton County. So clearly, this, I'm glad you've reached out to them, because there are players that, as you said, have little pieces of this already, but it is an exciting idea to think about integration and a more holistic message, because I think sometimes business owners feel like they're being bombarded by people saying, no, do this, no, do that, no, do this. And it'd be helpful to have the information presented more comprehensively and more clearly.
Certainly, and that was one of the biggest pieces of feedback we got from our early discussions with SWAC about this, is that we wanted a community partnership approach. We wanted to make sure that those groups that are already working on similar initiatives that could work hand in hand are being included. And this is certainly, if we move forward, this would be a team effort across the county with every major stakeholder. And we're getting a lot of really great feedback, like I said, from Corvallis Sustainability Coalition. They're very interested, and the Economic Development Office gave us a lot of great feedback. We also wanted to make sure that we weren't stepping on anyone's toes and just make sure that it's working hand in hand and we have that partnership approach as we develop this plan.
Again, it sounds like it's very much in line with our 2040 thriving communities values, and I think it's the right way to approach the issues. And I'm impressed with the work that the council's doing with your support. It's wonderful to see, and I know that Tino Barrera has also been very instrumental in some of these, the research that you've been doing.
Okay, if there's nothing further on the green business certificates, we'll move on to updating the Coffin Butte rate structure.
All right. And I think, yeah, I think I might have gone out of turn on the Coffin Butte rate structure. I think I discussed that too early here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I think we're done with the solid waste program updates, and the Republic report doesn't show up until later in the agenda.
Commissioners, just a consideration, if the board wanted to jump to the item under new business that's relevant to this topic, we could do that. We do have another topic, which is the facilities update that's interjected at 5.5, but it might be a distraction and not the best use of people's time if we move to 5.5. So I would suggest that the board go to new business and consider the republic services topic. That's my suggestion, but the board can certainly do what you wish.
Item 7.2.
That makes sense to keep the theme consistent. So we are now on new business, 7.2, approving the 2019 Republic Services annual report and 2019 hauler's report. So why don't you continue, Daniel?
Okay, thank you. I did have just a couple slides. I know in the past, my, the program predecessor introduced these documents with a couple slides to sum up some of the high-level details in graph form, and I wanted to do the same. I have them for you here. And we also have Julie Jackson on as well to discuss in a bit more detail. But to preface these documents, I wanted to include a helpful graph about waste generation at Coffin Butte or disposal at Coffin Butte by county. This is something that is detailed in the report, and this simply compares this year's report to the last six years, or seven years, rather, in terms of generation from county to county, being represented as disposal at Coffin Butte. Benton County has stayed relatively constant in the last three years. Washington County has had more disposal at Coffin Butte, and I believe Julie Jackson will be discussing that further. We also see a general increase in overall tonnage at Coffin Butte over the past three years. Again, this is likely attributed to that Washington County increase that we see, that jump after 2016. And I wanted to also include our recovery rate, and that's essentially the amount of waste that, out of the total waste being brought or generated, this is the amount that is either being recycled or composted. And we're hovering right around 35% for the last three years, and that's very similar to the national average as well as the state average. And with that brief introduction, I would like to pass it to Julie Jackson if you'd like to discuss both the Coffin Butte report as well as the Republic annual report.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I think McNabb is on and would probably be able to do a better job discussing the Coffin Butte report, especially if you have any questions about anything very technical. Typically, we come to you with our annual report for the hauling division, and I can do a couple things. As I always say, I can go through the whole report with you, but I think that you probably don't need me to do that. I can answer questions. I have the report on my desktop if you'd like me to pull it up and share my screen. What would you prefer?
Oh, I guess, why don't you pull up your screen and kind of go through the highlights, and then we can see where the questions land.
Great. All right, I think I'm sharing my screen now.
Yes.
Okay, great. This year again, we sort of focus on people in the annual report, because I think now more than ever, it is the people who work for us, who are out there, who haven't missed a beat during COVID-19. I always like to say, because I'm really proud of people who work for us. So it's really the people who make our company the great company that it is, and I think we are able to do the job we're able to do because of the people. So these are some of the people you've seen. If some of you have not met Tino Barrera, this is him right here. So these folks all work in Corvallis. I wanted to point out, this is kind of small, maybe I won't point that out. One of the things I'm really proud of is that our company has decided to really focus on the environment. That is the way that we think we can differentiate ourselves from other companies. And so in my mind, that's the right way to go, so it fits. We have some goals by 2030 as a company, and the top one is safety. Again, Again, not necessarily the environment, but it's the most important thing we do to keep not only our drivers safe, but the public safe out as we're on the road. The other thing I just wanted to mention is an engaged workforce. You know, workforce, as you know, is really changing. And it is becoming more and more difficult to hire qualified truck drivers to drive our trucks. So we know that we have to change what we're doing a little bit. We have to make those jobs that are more appealing to younger folks because we have an aging population working, driving our trucks. So that's great. The climate leadership piece is, I know that's really small, but our goal is to reduce absolute greenhouse gas emissions by 35% by 2030. So that's a pretty aggressive goal. We plan to do that with clean energy trucks, which, as you know, in Benton County, we're already operating compressed natural gas trucks. I can tell you that our Boise division is receiving two electric trucks this year. And we're very interested in watching that and letting them sort of pave the way as we look at other alternatives for clean energy trucks. And then, I know you guys are all aware, our landfill generates about enough energy each year to power 4,500 homes. So if you want to think about powering a dairy village while it's right there. And so that's one of the things that people often don't know about Coffin-Butte, but we do and have been for many years, generating gas and putting it on the power grid. We could talk about it in diversity and inclusion, and I think it's important to mention that this year. Our company has taken some pretty strong measures to provide a platform for our employees who are of a different race or creed or color. And in fact, there's a group called the Black Employees Network that has been providing some really insightful workshops for all of us across the board. And so I'm proud of the way we're moving in that direction. I say this all the time, 15 years ago when I started with the company, there were no women in management in our business unit. And now we have two. So that's a big step forward. This is giving back. I think, as you know, last year we gave $135,000 to the South Town Living Corvallis project. And that money, while they haven't used it yet, they're planning to use it to put on some threats, to talk with the community about how to revitalize that area and how best to create housing in that area. So we're really proud of that. In the meantime, during this COVID crisis, we, for the first eight weeks, pretty much that was April and May, I will say, we provided a dinner that employees took home for their family every week and another meal at work during the week, just to sort of help get folks, you know, on the right track and help them out a little bit as they started to work through this pandemic. We also provided four $100 gift cards to all of those employees with a list of local businesses and strongly encouraged them to spend on that local businesses. We've heard a lot of great stories about how somebody went in with their gift card and said, hey, my company gave this to me to spend with local businesses here. And sort of that back and forth, you know, conversation between the business and our employees. So those are great stories. We've spent almost $150,000 in the Willamette Valley. And all that came out of, not out of customer rates, but out of, at the corporate level. So we're really, really proud of that. And it was just a way for us to show our employees how important we think they are and how much we appreciate them being out there on the front line. I can tell you, to date, we do not have any employees who have contracted the virus. And so knock on wood, we'll keep it that way. Customer service is one that I think you guys always are interested in. We have customer service representatives working remotely from their homes in the Corvallis area. And we are, right when the pandemic hit, we had posted some more jobs. We had gotten permission to hire more local customer service representatives. We had to postpone that because we didn't know how to hire and train those people during this time. We are in August going to be interviewing people. And we've got people who are figuring out just how we're going to train them, if it will be virtually, if it will be in person, or a combination of both. So we will have more customer service representatives working probably remotely at first in the Corvallis area. And then this guide, the city of Corvallis on it, is something that we put together this year. And we created about 21 different versions. There's a Benton County version as well. And so we tried to share information about service, what can be recycled, what's the most contamination, what definitely not to put in your cart, how to recycle, hazardous waste events. And then the goal, because, to be frank with you, I hadn't hired Tino yet, and it was just me, and I threw these together in November. The goal for 2020, and Tino's already been working hard on this, is to add a lot more local information. So for example, if there were a green business program in place by 20, or if Daniel thought that that would be ready by 2020, we could certainly include that in this guide. We could include information about, and we have a little bit of information about local reuse opportunities, but that's where we'd really like to beef it up and add some more. The other piece of this is that we have a new and improved website, which I think is probably a relief to all of you and to us as well. It is far more informational than we've ever had before. And that really is due to Tino's hard work, putting, getting those updated. It is something we can update much more readily. So we really welcome your input. And what I'll do after this meeting is just send the link out so that all of you will have that web address and can take a look at your legion. And please feel free to stop me with questions, because otherwise I'm just going to kind of run through this pretty quickly. But this has a blank spot. That's not good. So I just want to let you know, Tino is out there. He has been working really hard. It's a challenge to do outreach right now, a big challenge. So we've really focused on the website and on what we're getting out to our customers as well as these videos that Daniel mentioned. Daniel and Tino are working on a video about what a secured load looks like, a covered and secured load looks like, and why it's important to do that. We're also putting together a video tour of Coffin-Butte landfill, a video tour of the Pacific Region compost. And then the other idea is to put together a video touch a truck event. So that's kind of something to put on the website for families. And it's really from a safety perspective so that we can really show people, you know, what can a driver see when they're in the truck? And where can children hide if they're running beside a truck and all of those kinds of things? So we're trying to get as much information on that website as possible and make it as easy for our customers to use as possible. So this is the slide you usually ask me questions about. And I think you have it in your packet. It really just talks about year-over-year changes in recycling. And so you can see that yard debris, our co-mingle was down slightly in 2019 over 2018. And I think that would be expected, given the changes that were made in the recycling market and the education we put out there. We like to think that that is probably less wishful recycling, more proper material in the recycling, but not so much contamination. That's my optimistic goal. Yard debris is about flat. If I'm not telling you next year that yard debris is up significantly, it'll probably be a lie because we are seeing record numbers of yard debris as people are home and people are, you know, working in their yards and looking for projects to do. So the landfill has seen more self-haulers than ever before and more yard debris coming in as well. So that, I think, will go up. Are there questions about any of these numbers? I can go through them all, but I don't think you need me to unless you have questions about them.
Zan?
Julie, just a question about the wood waste. Is that, this is all household and not construction demolition debris, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Because otherwise, that number looks strange. But the commercial numbers are in a different graph.
Yeah, right. No, that's just residential.
Okay, I think, keep going, Julie.
All right. This is just more information about residential tons per month. And a couple more examples of pages from that brochure that probably, that all of you should have received in the mail. By the way, we'll be mailing another one out in late December this year for next year. So you can see that we're providing information about the cart, what goes in the cart. We have calendar dates. We have a lot of information, more information than we've ever been able to send out in one piece. And again, we hope to make that even better for you. You know, this is hazardous waste. And we always include it, but I always use the caveat that it is pretty meaningless because some of these amounts are so minute. And the only thing that this really tells you is kind of just a ballpark, what do we get in at these hazardous waste events? And it tends to be fairly close to the same total tonnage. I'm not sure how meaningful that is in terms of total tonnage, but at least you can see some of the things that we get at our hazardous waste events. One of those was canceled in May, just so you know. And there is one coming up this weekend. We're going to go ahead and hold that one this coming Saturday at the Corvallis office. And we will be taking pretty rigid precautions to keep people safe. We ought to encourage people to stay in their car. We always do that, but this time we'll really be enforcing that if they attempt to get out of their car. So we didn't want too many of those to go by without taking care of them. So this number just kind of gives you numbers, comparisons, how many people show up at each of the hazardous waste events. I kind of expect this to be a big one, even though August is typically not necessarily larger than the others, but I expect it to be just because they didn't get a chance in May to dispose of that. So we'll see if that plays out. This is a customer count. You know, this is the, this is not the Benton County customer count, I don't think. Maybe it is. Oh, yeah. So what you can see here is the number of people who have different sized cans and carts. And so I wanted to just catch on that for a second, too, and tell you that the big trend we are seeing is that we're seeing about 30 to 40% more trash by volume than we would expect than year-over-year from the same timeframe in 2019. And we know that that's due to COVID-19. I know people are at home making waste at home instead of at work. College students are at home. There may be other people living in the same households. And so we are seeing a huge increase in the volume of trash. And we're trying to look to the future and decide what that looks like. What does that trend look like? How long does that last? And then as some people continue to work from home or remotely indefinitely based on this, how does that work? So just really good information for you to have, nothing that we're going to do anything different about right now, except that to know that it's requiring more trips to the landfill for residential routes. Our operations team is working really hard to fine tune those routes and move people from commercial routes where there may have been, where there's less service, to residential routes and figuring out how to make that really efficient. So it's been a challenge. I think we're doing a really good job of it. And just to note, I would suspect that we have a permanent norm of more volume at home, but I don't know. One of the other things that we're talking about is more contamination in the recycling. And we're not talking about somebody throwing a clamshell container in by mistake. What we're really talking about is a bag full of trash thrown in the recycling cart. And we are seeing more and more of that as people can't fit their trash into their trash cart. So figuring out how to deal with that is one thing. One of the things you may want to consider is an increase, a fee added to the rate sheet for when a driver sees a bag of trash coming out of a recycled cart. That is what we're implementing in other locations. And it would only be for those bags of trash. We're not charging about the wrong recycling or wishful recycling. But we think people know they're doing that. So that's something to consider. Commercial and industrial, not really important. We can go over the financial documents if you like. If you have questions, I'm happy to go over those. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the basic information. If there's something you'd like me to go back and talk about, I can. Or if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay. Early on, Julie, you talked about Washington County. And what's the current situation with hauling waste from Portland metro area?
So that Washington County, those central Washington County, what you see are a partnership that we have with Waste Management. It's probably aware that about that same time that those tons started coming to us, Riverbend landfill, which is in Washington County close. And so that is tonnage coming from Riverbend landfill. We expect that to fall off pretty drastically this year. But that was something that we worked with the county and we worked with Waste Management to bring those tons to Coffin-Butte because, as I think you're all aware, Coffin-Butte is a regional landfill. Tons come from a variety of places in the valley. Our main counties are Lynn, Benton, Lincoln, Polk, and Marion County. That is where historically most of the tonnage has come from. And that, those Washington County tons are sort of an anomaly.
Julie, this is Vance. I just want to clarify, I think you misspoke. Riverbend's in Yamhill County, not Washington, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, it is. But the tons that, yeah, thank you very much. The tons that came from Riverbend were tons coming from Washington County.
And it's unlikely...
The company Recology works in Yamhill County, and they are sending their tons by rail down the gorge, I believe.
And Riverbend is 99% certain not to reopen again, is that correct?
Yes.
Have we crossed the threshold to 100% yet?
I don't, you know, I keep wondering that. And I'm not sure, Ian may be able to speak to that, but...
Yeah, I don't know anymore either.
It's just they've sort of gone black. There's no talk about them at all.
All right, thanks.
Well, I guess, keep going, Julie.
I, you know, I think that's the basic information unless you want to go over, you know, financial documents, which, the one thing I will show you on this one is the recycling receipts, which are, and I apologize, I think these are the city of Corvallis numbers, but they're similar. The recycling receipts are negative. So this shows that we're, every month we lose money on recycling. But again, we've continued to kind of power through that. We have a surcharge that we instituted a couple of years back, and that seems to be keeping us above water on that.
Julie, just out of curiosity, before the China market collapsed, were you still losing market on the recycling? Because that sort of was the high watermark for you, wasn't it?
Yeah, before the markets really changed forever, we think, we were being paid for recycling. So the swing was about $100. It was about, we maybe were making in the, let's say, $49 a ton on co-mingled recycling. We're currently paying about, I didn't look at this month's numbers, but in the $50 to $60 we're paying to recycle co-mingled materials. So that's really the swing that happened, and it is why it's such a drastic difference. So that's really the swing that happened and it is why it's such a drastic difference.
And that is quite a swing, isn't it?
It is, it was huge.
Thanks.
Julie, on the financials, on, not going into detail, but. So you develop those numbers for the Coffin Butte facility. You send those to Phoenix or wherever headquarters is. Are those, do they use your financials as part of developing their overall financial statements that gets reported to shareholders?
Well, ultimately, I guess the easy answer is all of the work that we do, the hauling companies, the landfills, the waste energy facilities, the compost facilities, all of that comprises the corporation, that is Republic Services. What we report to you are local numbers. Now, these numbers in this report, this is the hauling division report, so these do not reflect Coffin Butte landfill at all. That's a separate division and not one that I report on. There is a report that Ian is here to talk about for Coffin Butte as well, but these are the hauling companies.
Thank you. All right, is, let's see, is the Coffin Butte report next?
Yeah, we can do that next.
All right. Why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I need to share my screen.
Trying to unshare.
All right, can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. Again, Julie, we'll just go high level unless people have specific questions about different pages. So we have a section that deals with our density that we've measured over the last year and how many remaining years of site life we have left, which is about 26. We cover our gap, our projects, our construction project that we were going to complete in 2020. Big ones are the old, we call it the burn dump area, the old pre-valley landfill. Landfill that dates back to the 1940s. We are in year two of moving it from an unlined cell into a lined cell. So we're about two thirds of the way through it. We wrapped that up in July. We've added additional landfill gap collection infrastructure. And we continue to take care of, we planted a row of trees along our entrance road a few years ago just to eventually screen us a little better from the highways so we're a little less visible. We continue to take care of those and we'll be starting fairly soon to add more of the black exposed cover that you see when you're driving by and that's to help shed water off the landfill till we generate less leachate. And that's an ongoing thing we do every year. Next section just goes through a summary of our groundwater monitoring report for the year. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions about it, but.
Ian, I do have, Ian, I do have a question about the life of the landfill. You mentioned, just sort of offhand, about 26 years worth of life. I know that that number varies almost, almost monthly just because it's so dependent on how much waste you take in. But does the current 26-year estimate, is that based on the last two years of more than a million tons being brought in? Or is that based on a longer average of tonnage received?
It's based off of an assumption that tonnage will drop off from where we've been and closer to a million tons a year to more like 750,000.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, 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 one more question? Well, maybe not the last one. You're currently excavating, I know you've got quarrying activity going on in anticipation of opening up another cell. Does the 26 years of life anticipate use of that quarried hole as a new cell?
It does, yes. It covers the entire buildout of the site. So that whole quarry area plus where we're currently filling.
Thank you.
The next sections are just summaries of various different reports that we make to the EQ, our air permits, our tonnage, and this graph that Daniel has sent out is just the table form of it. We have a section covering the balance of the environmental trust fund that has continued to go up over the last 10 years. We also have a section covering all of our various permits that we have in place. One thing that has happened since this was published is we did receive our solid waste permit renewal. We received that last week, the 10-year permit. We have a section with summary of complaints, fairly low numbers. We have a section covering PRC's tonnage over the last two years, summarizing totals for the facility. 2019 was up slightly over the previous year. We have a section on PRC's odor notifications. They were up slightly over the previous year. And finally, we just have various appendices with different documents from, from the actual reports. So we have the actual text of our annual monitoring, environmental monitoring report and various other documents. We can go through any of them if you'd like, or if anybody has any questions about any specific ones that is nice to look at.
Maybe just the highlights of the fact that you have many years' worth of monitoring now, but there don't seem to be any alarming trends, correct?
That is correct. There are no trends in groundwater that are concerning. I mean, historically, the site had some elevated levels related to that burn dump area. But those have decreased significantly, basically to almost non-detect since the 1990s. And removing the waste from an unlined area and placing it in a lined cell completely removes that environmental liability.
That's great. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or anything we want to cover?
I think you can go ahead.
All right, well, that's the end of the report, basically. Unless you want to get into any of the details in the appendix. But we've kind of covered the highlights of everything.
Ready to approve?
Yep.
I would move that we approve the Republic Services annual report for 2019 and the Coffin Butte Pacific Region Compost Annual Report for 2019.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, reports are approved. And thank you for the thorough update and looking forward to hearing more about some of these new programs. So, thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Thanks, Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, could we take a five-minute break?
That's what I was going to say. So we will, it's 20 after 11. Let's take a five-minute break and we will come back to 5.5 and the facilities update. See you, Gary and Paul, in five minutes. Okay, we're back, refreshed and ready to go. So are you leading things off, Paul, on the facilities discussion?
I am, and if I could please get presenter rights.
And just for the record, Pat, because I'm not showing up here, my computer decided to update itself, so I'm here.
You're just not visible.
Huh?
You're just not visible.
I'm just not visible, which is okay.
Hey, Paul, Joe Kirby, while you're getting set up there, I just wanted to provide a little bit of context for the board before you get started.
Sure.
Commissioners, as you're aware, we began Phase 1 of our design process for 4500 Research Way. We started that probably about four months ago. After about a month or two of working on the design for the 40% of the building, which is vacant, we're referencing that as Phase 1. As we began to get into that Phase 1 design, it became very apparent that it would be much easier, better, cost-effective and efficient for us to try and design Phase 1 and Phase 2 at the same time. Phase 2 is the portion of the building that's currently occupied by a tenant. We came to the board and shared our difficulties about not designing the entire space at once. We suggested to the board that we put design on hold until which time we could get greater clarity from the tenant that's currently occupying the building in terms of what their future intent was. We've been able to gain some clarity from the tenant regarding what their future intent is. Based on those verbal conversations, we've restarted design and now we're looking at designing Phase 1 and Phase 2 at the same time. Paul's been working on that quickly over the course of the last 30 days. And really, the purpose of today is for us to provide a litmus test to the board. You haven't seen any detailed design at this point in time. And once again, this is just a litmus test. This is not a final design that you're seeing today. It's once again just putting a concept out there, having Paul explain that to you and then us going back and working with departments to redesign the, what's being shared with you today. So strictly a litmus test to get your immediate reactions to what you see. Paul, with that being said, if you'd like to jump in?
Yeah, thanks, Joe. Okay, just a little bit of basic context about what you're seeing here. This is, of course, the building at 4500 Research Way. This would be the western side of the building or the side of the building that is currently being occupied by the tenant. And this would be the other half of the building, which is currently empty or, you know, being housed with the jig and the EOC right now. So this would be the empty side of the building. What I've been doing over the last several weeks, I've been going out to each department and just start talking about a first draft rough fit, how they would fit into the building and if they fit into the building with those, with those work for them. And so I just want to kind of run through the first draft of this with you very, pretty quickly. And I'll just jump up to the second floor. We've managed to make a little, a little more progress here. Currently here on the second floor, you can see we, we feel pretty confident that the assessor's office will fit into the area that I'm marking here. We're feeling very confident about that right now. County Operations, you know, with the county administrator, executive assistant, project manager, PIO. We still have a little bit of work left to do in this area, but we're starting to feel pretty confident that we're getting close here. After discussions with Human Resources, they're feeling pretty comfortable about this area and they're feeling like that should work out for them on the second floor as well. As we start looking at the area, which is currently occupied by, currently occupied by the tenant, we found some adjacencies right for this first draft anyway. And I'm anticipating probably four drafts of this before we sort of get down to something that we can really use. We put Juvenile Services on the second floor. They're okay with that. They feel like they might be a little bit better on the first floor, but could make that work on the second floor if they needed to. One of the key points to their setup with this restroom, they have to be able to do UAs or urinalysis analysis for their clients. And this restroom here plops directly over the top of the two locker rooms that are below on the first floor so that we have a sewer trunk to tie directly to. So that was just one of the key factors and sort of sticking Juvenile into this area. We've put finance here. They think this is going to be a good fit for them. And this also fit accounts for the fact that they need to expand in the future. You know, Mary was saying that, you know, they may be looking at some expansion in the future. And so this is a considerably larger area than they were in before, but this would account for that expansion. And then kind of in the back of the building, we have the existing conference room that was built by the existing, by the tenant. And it's pretty state-of-the-art. It's got accordion doors, it's got all the plugs for TVs and all the bells and whistles. So I'm making the assumption that's a piece of infrastructure that we're going to want to keep as we go forward. And so as we started looking at it, IT fit around this very well. But in the long term, they very well, IT may actually drop down to the first floor because we have some critical infrastructure down there that as the tenant vacates would be good for them. And then there's also a place on the first floor where all the D-mark is, so all the low voltage and fiber network and all that sort of stuff comes into the building. So that was sort of the rough block plan that we put together for the second floor. Any questions on that?
Well, I had the same reaction about Juvenile. It seems like they would be better off on the first floor just because of access. They have a lot of people that are coming and going and I think sometimes they also don't necessarily want to parade in front of everyone else. They have their own private entrance here in Sunset. I know that juveniles can be particularly leery of being seen. So the more privately they can enter, the more likely they are to come and participate. So that was one reaction. The other was that the separation of county operations in the Board of Commissioners office. And I'm sure that you guys expected to hear that comment from what are more of us. But I really appreciate the fact that county operations in the Board of Commissioners are housed in the same place now. And I would be quite sad to see that disconnect happen.
I had the same reaction, yes.
Okay, well, let's discuss that really fast then. And we did initially split this because one of the, one of the problems that we run into, the initial problem is, you know, nobody's in a big hurry to go to this building except for records and elections. We still have that issue at the courthouse, the DA is expanding, they're hiring people now and they have nowhere to put them.
Yeah.
And so records and elections needed to go first. We had to find a way to fit them into at least Phase 1 or to an area that we had empty. And so once we put them there, it took away from the rest of the layout of the building. But quite frankly, the clerk likes nothing about this at all. I don't think there is maybe an aspect of this that he liked. So, you know, he would probably be better off on this portion of the first floor, even moved up to the second floor. And then that would give us the opportunity to keep the sort of Board of Commissioners and county administration the way they are now and continue to use this area right here in the back of the building where there are currently really no windows, this sort of dark area of the building as, you know, functions that would, that would meet that part of the layout without doing a whole bunch of infrastructure changes to the building, some very expensive changes to add windows to that.
I do like, I do like the fact that there are document storage and public records right on site. That is an improvement over current processes, so.
Okay, I'll make sure, I'll make a note of that as well.
Paul, Joe Kirby, can, Paul, can you overlay for the board, for the purposes of the board to see what it looks like? Can you use one of your design tools to show how we insert the desks that are more cubical oriented as opposed to? as opposed to offices, so they can see what that looks like?
Yeah, this is a typical six-by-six, yeah, six-by-six cubicle here, and so as you start plopping these in, you can really start to see how then, where do we go? And then you can start to see how you could really put a lot of, there's still a lot of open space here. You can put a lot of workspaces and workstations loaded into this area, perhaps this area, you know, perhaps shift these offices north a little, and because these are all on the election side, then you can take smaller workstation sections and stack them along in this area as well. So there's probably room, not just with offices, but my estimate, we probably have room for about 15 to 20 workstations on this area as well.
That also depends on COVID assumptions and whether or not we can work in close proximity and in open spaces, et cetera, correct?
Yeah, I'm working on the assumption that this is far enough down the road that there will be a vaccine for COVID-19 by the time we occupy this building, so I'm working towards that assumption.
Okay, I still have the same concerns I expressed earlier, but I know that this is just the first draft, so.
Yeah.
I'm excited to see it coming together and concepts on paper. And it looks like.
Okay, and I've made note of trying to find a way to see if we can't, as you say, keep the band together and try and keep the commissioners and the rest of the administrative staff together in one place. I'll work on that.
That would be great. And I see that in this iteration, community development is in the new space. I know that there's been that off and on because of the synergy with environmental health, but there's also the synergy with public works. So either way, they lose something or gain something?
Yeah, we discussed that. And you see here on the bottom of my thing, we've kind of got a tab for each department as we discussed it, and so, whoops, those guys. So we did discuss what that would look like for them, some sort of a lobby, customer, now, all the blue lines that you see, sorry, are customer interface areas, so where they would have some sort of a customer interface to control noise, and then their rough areas. And Joe was talking about these blocks. If you see here, community development currently occupies about 1,977 square feet, and then I have these neat little blocks that I can shrink and raise and grow, and it shows what the square footage of the block is, and so, you know, under this, it would give community development, you know, considerable more room. They would go from, you know, 1,900 square feet to around 3,000 square feet somewhere in that neighborhood. So we have taken a look at it. Nothing, again, you know, first draft, nothing's final on that, then if they even want to make that move, or if that move's going to happen, but we did at least look at it with community development.
Okay.
And Commissioners, your feedback is really appreciated on this topic. Greg Verret and I have had a number of conversations over the last couple of months regarding his concerns with relocating to 4500 Research Way. I did indicate to him that at some point we would facilitate a conversation with the board on this particular topic to make a decision as to what's the best direction to go. So just now that Greg does have concerns, I've had Paul go ahead and engage Greg in conversation about what it would look like if they were placed in this facility, and so that's kind of where we stand. So Greg does have concerns and would like to express those to the board at some future point.
I think that there's also some potential for synergy between community development and assessment, and making sure that we have better quality records transferred between the departments. I don't think that necessarily requires physical proximity, but I know that just in terms of the mapped data that we use for assessment versus what comes from community development, having service district records up to date, all of that, there's definitely room for synergy and improvement there as well. It just depends on what's going to make the biggest difference in terms of customer service and process, and I think we need to take more advantage of web-based ability to achieve some of those synergies, too.
Okay. Paul, if community development didn't move to 4500, what does that do to the current facility? At this point, is Avery fairly full, and that would free up some expansion room, or what does that do to Avery, I guess is the question?
Right now, community development scaled out there. They're full, so if they hire anybody else, we're actually splitting workstations for them to be able to add people. So they are at a point where they're scaled out. If they left Avery, it would leave that whole lower space downstairs, and, you know, just as a rough idea, nothing official, of course, I think that would be a great space for the sheriffs, mountain rescue, and their marine patrol. They already have all of their equipment and all of their stuff here at Avery, anyway. You know, it'd seem a good fit for the sheriff's marine patrol and mountain rescue teams to be able to office there.
Okay.
Paul, does the contemplation of community development going to 4500 include the building inspector and the second inspector, as well as our solid waste coordinator? Because it didn't look as if you had enough space allocated for the bodies that comprise that entire department.
Unknown at this time, Vance. We really haven't answered the question if they would go there or not, so what you saw was just an hour with community development, that if we did build them out of space, roughly, what would that look like?
Okay, thanks.
And then a couple of other infrastructure things I'd like to just kind of go over really quick is, we have managed to do a pretty good job of starting to standardize space a little bit, where the commissioners are, your offices are around 250 square feet. We've tried to get the directors in around 150 to 160 square feet. Regular workstation offices down to 120 square feet, and then, until we engage with the furniture designers and stuff, we're still not quite sure exactly what workstations would be after that. And then another thing I've been trying to do with the buildings, too, is to really separate the employee areas from the public areas so that we keep what I call a safety barrier in place. So, you know, if you look here on the first floor, this wall is basically a safety barrier. You know, you have to have card access, or somebody has to let you through to get from this point to this point. I think all of our customer service windows, not with COVID-19, really brought it to the forefront, but I think those all have to be built in now, not just for biological safety, but also for physical safety. And then I did add a reception area on the first floor, because I think if we don't, everybody that comes in the door here will just go directly to whoever the first hot body they see, and they will become the pseudo unofficial receptionist for the building.
That seems smart.
Commissioners, one of the things that you'll see on the first floor, on the left of your screen, is a block that says daycare on it. Once again, that's a litmus test. We've talked about the possibility of providing onsite daycare, providing the square footage, and potentially hiring a contractor to operate daycare. So that is just a placeholder. There's nothing firm. We haven't looked at a business plan. We haven't looked at demand, but it would be worthwhile to get your feedback on that as well.
Well, having just read a statewide report on the shortage of daycare across the state, and the fact that it's only gotten much worse under COVID conditions, I think I would be very supportive of that kind of space usage. I think it would be an incredible amenity for many of our staff. Of course, there are a lot of issues to consider, as you point out, in terms of business model and the relative emphasis. I know that in this community, the zero-to-three age is where is the biggest shortage. Three-to-five, there are more spots, or were, prior to COVID, and of course, right now, there are challenges for everyone because of school not being a physical program at the moment.
I know that the federal government has, for years, had daycare in many of their buildings, and it really is a help to employees, but to others in the neighborhoods.
I think if we can do it, if we have the space to do it, it would be a real amenity for our employees and for others as well.
Yeah.
And I'd be happy to provide that report that I just found. There's a researcher here at OSU that was involved in that report and was instrumental in putting that data together for Benton County.
Oh, is that right? Okay. Yeah, I'd love to see that. That'd be great.
Paul, I remember when we were uncertain, when Pfizer was moving out, that there was talk of a second staircase, I think on the outside of the building. Could that be of any help to having the juvenile department on the second floor?
It very well could. This is the staircase that's in question right now. The one that I'm sort of circling here does not exist.
Okay.
So we added this to the plan because this is the door that comes in the back to the EOC that already exists, and so it gives employees an opportunity to go up to the first or second floor, or transit from the second floor to the first floor and vice versa, without going outside of the security barrier.
Okay.
Paul, can you also talk about the main stairwell at the entry?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me see, I think, if you look here, this is the first floor unchanged. We have that, kind of right in the middle of the building, we have that one sort of very weird staircase that really takes apart the flow of the building, so when you come in, it's at that funny angle. So all of these drawings are assuming that that stairway will come out and somehow or another be transferred out to the lobby area, so we'd have stairs that would go from this open lobby area up to the second floor. This represents a spiral staircase, and take that with a grain of salt. It was just a cool icon that I could get out of Vizio to stick there to remind me that that's where the staircase should go.
All right.
Yeah.
Any other questions on sort of the basic overview of all of this? I think the departments are definitely going to change around. First floor, second floor, this side, that side. I think we're going to have to move things around, at least, like I said, I think we're going to get to at least draft four of this. But once we get to that draft, and it's my intention, now we know what we want, and then I can turn this whole thing back over to DLR and start getting real prints drawn at that point. But until then, it feels more comfortable to do this and how save all of those design costs until we can really get this fit test, as it were, hammered out.
That makes sense.
I guess I have a question on conference rooms and how many we have. I know at Sunset, there's a fairly large number, and I guess just for efficiency sake, making sure maybe fewer, larger conference rooms that we get a lot of use out of, but just kind of a general comment.
You think we need more smaller conference rooms rather than more large ones? Is that what I'm getting, Commissioner Malone?
Maybe the opposite, fewer conference rooms, but one or two big ones that get a lot of use rather than having a lot of space that's empty 80% of the time, and.
Well, one thing that could happen.
I understand completely.
Sorry.
What do you think of this? This would be your new public meeting room. This is roughly 1,300 square feet, which is about double what you have now. I think you're just a little over 700 square feet now. Does that feel right? Is that in the neighborhood?
Yeah, and mine was a general comment. I'm not, it seems like at Sunset, there's a lot of conference rooms, and not being at the building much, I don't know how they're used or how much they're used, but just as part of design, trying to figure out what's needed.
I think that we have some data, don't we, just from reservations of the conference rooms? And prior to COVID, my sense of this is that they were busy a lot of the time, and there were times when it was difficult to find a room for small meetings. But because we're not meeting as much in person, it's just not the case right now. So it's, I think, difficult to look at this time right now. We have to take a look at those past records to see. The other is that I think that a lot of those conference rooms end up being used as workspaces if someone really needs to close a door and have a private and quiet place to spread out. So I think that's something we need to think about really carefully. It deserves more analysis.
A lot of locations now have conference rooms with expandable screens that you can break them down even.
It depends on sound barrier and how effective it is as a sound barrier.
Yeah, I don't know.
Because some of those are not very effective.
Well, I've been in some that have been fairly effective. Depends on the technology that's already in.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this is the second floor again, and you can see there's two main conference rooms, and that did come up about putting an accordion wall in here, so it could be one room or two rooms. I think there's some real merit to that. And then HR was pretty insistent that they had at least one small conference room for, you know, for some real private conversations that they would have. But another thing that really came up in the discussions on that with the department heads, and we look here, it kind of came up with the clerk plan, nope, CD plan, sorry, was some conference rooms that were available from the public areas. So if they got a whole group of people in to talk about plans, that they had some place to take everybody to, to have that conversation. So it's not two people at a window, but you have eight or nine people for a larger project that show up for a meeting and have an access off of the public areas for those secondary conference rooms.
Agreed.
Or for advisory committees and councils.
Right.
Exactly, all those little sort of small things.
Hen?
And juvenile expressed sort of the same thing as well, because sometimes they'll get, you know, some people come in and they, you know, sort of bring the whole entourage with them when they come, so they need that extra room as well.
And I appreciate you mentioning that this is the first of maybe four drafts. Do you have a timetable on getting to the fourth draft that we can turn over to DLR?
I don't have an exact timetable right now. This is just going to take some time to get to, I think, but I think we'll probably get, after the next draft, we'll be getting pretty close, and then, I guess, it'll be time to really start having some conversations, because not everybody gets everything they want. Compromises are going to have to start being made at that point, and, you know, start making those decisions that, you know, maybe people will enjoy and maybe they won't enjoy, to start really getting this block plan or this fit test put together. So, you know, my hope would be to have this back to DLR in a month. That might be, you know, that might be a little ambitious, stick myself out there too far, but, you know, I'd like to see this get moving forward, so.
Yep.
This is exciting, Paul, and kind of, I guess it's nice to be able to plan for the whole building at once rather than working with somebody else's timetable, so looking forward to draft number two.
Paul, it's been a long time since I've been in this building, but that stairway does wrap around an elevator, correct?
This section, this is the elevator here, so the, it would be, the stairway is currently kind of right in this area.
Okay. Good. Okay. Want to make sure we're planning for accessibility in all ways we can.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. This is really a pretty good elevator. It's an Otis unit, and it's in really pretty dang good condition. So, I just had it serviced and evaluated, and the service tech said that, you know, this thing had received pretty minimal use over its life.
Excellent.
Good. Did you have any more points you wanted to bring up, Paul?
No, that's it. I think I've really stretched my 30 minutes to the breaking point here, so I will clam up now.
Okay. Well, thank you for the update, and it's, like I say, it's exciting to see this project moving forward and looking forward to the next draft.
Well, thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up, number six, consent calendar, and you had a change, Joe.
Commissioners, what I would like to do is request that you remove and redirect the planning commission appointments from today's consent calendar and allow staff the ability to place that on our agenda at our every quarterly meeting, which is scheduled for next Wednesday. I do believe, after talking with the community development director, that there should be further discussion regarding the planning commission appointments before the board formally takes this up for consideration.
So, the idea, we can remove the Public Works appointments from the consent calendar.
Planning.
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 Yeah, we would remove the planning commission appointments from the consent calendar, and the board would continue to move forward with the remaining appointments that are left on the consent calendar.
Okay.
With that in mind, I will move the consent calendar for appointments to the food service, historic resources, and mental health.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That takes care of number six, and now we're on, back to number seven, new business, 7.1, approving the revision of the scope in Exhibit B of the IGA with Cascades West COG for the Stand By Me project. And I think I saw Mary Ottley had joined us a little while back. Mary?
Morning, actually afternoon, Commissioners. I was tangentially involved in the changing of the agreement with Cascades West Council of Government on your Stand By Me program, and the contract itself didn't change the attachment that has, the work product has changed, and so I provided you with a redline copy. And this is just to formally acknowledge that we've changed the work plan.
And I can address the changes briefly, because I was involved in working with Randy Moore on some of that content. I became aware when I was working with her earlier this spring that part of what was holding them back in terms of getting this project up and going was that we hadn't really put any money in explicitly for launching a pilot program. It was all for the planning, the preparation, the fundraising. But, they were hitting a logjam in terms of fundraising, because funders wanted to see an actual pilot and have something actually launching, and they, so there was a chicken and egg effect going on. So, basically, what we did was change the language in the scope of work under this intergovernmental agreement to allow for actual launch of pilot and to acknowledge getting the program off the ground. And so, they are now in a position where they made a lot of progress, as you heard from them last week, towards hiring a couple of people to actually launch the Stand By Me program in Oregon and to raise funds for that moving forward. So, I'm strongly in favor of adopting the new intergovernmental agreement.
Any other questions or comments on revised agreement? Mary, did you have any other comments?
No, I didn't. No.
Thank you.
Mary?
Then I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the revised IGA Exhibit B between Benton County and the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments.
There's background lights. I got it. It's me. Got it.
We need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We are now to number eight, other.
Commissioner?
No, 7.3.
7.3.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at... Thank you. Discussion and decision to establish Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Coordinator position in the Board of Commissioners' office. Lalea, would you like to speak to that?
I'm not sure she's on. I don't think she's on.
Commissioners, in Lalea's absence, I can certainly brief you on this, if you'd like.
Please.
Commissioners, we're coming before you today to approve a new position for an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Coordinator. This has been a position that's been talked about for some time within our organization. We made progress last fall and early winter whereby we created a position within our Health Services Department, and that was to focus on health equity. That was step number one. Step number two was then to create a Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion position for the overall county, and that's what we're coming before you today for your approval. Lalea has now joined us, so I will ask her to take it from here.
We can't hear you, Lalea.
Can't hear you.
How about now, Commissioners?
Great.
Gotcha.
Lovely. Sorry, sometimes navigating in between jabber and go-to meeting can be a little bit difficult. I was watching on the Facebook live stream to see when I was coming, because I was in a different meeting. My apologies for being a moment or two late, but thanks, Joe, for that intro. As Joe mentioned, really, this was a conversation that I became a part of last fall/winter when Joe was speaking with, at that point, the Director of the Health Department, Don Emrick, and Greg Barret, who oversaw the Sustainability Program, and really talked about the need, not only for a health equity position within the Health Department to assist the Health Services, but a role at the organizational level in county administration and the Board of Commissioners to advance broader issues within the organization. And so, a little thing called COVID had hit since then, and I just really appreciate the opportunity to continue to work on this despite a little bit of a delay with COVID. So, maybe about a month or two ago, I engaged with HR. They provided a wonderful working job to start from. I ran it by a couple of folks for their review and input. I spoke with you all about it and received some input from you all. I've incorporated that input. We sent it back over to Human Resources with the classification process. That classification came back at a C42 level, and so, that's where we're proposing to hire the position in at. And we did go to Position Review Committee with this position last week, and Position Review Committee approved the request for recruitment. There was a little bit of confusion about process with Position Review Committee, because they were aware that the board was very much interested in this position. So, they weren't sure what level of authority they had in terms of position creation, but they did definitely approve the recruitment request, and Mary provided some of the position establishment financials to attend the PRC. But, because it wasn't an official position that PRC creates, it doesn't actually have that PRC packet that you all are probably used to receiving, so that, just wanted to provide that explanation as to why you don't have that PRC packet in there. But, I did include the position description in the packet, as well as tried to complete, I think, the relevant sections of the packet for additional context. Joe, is there anything else that I can provide in terms of context for this position?
Lalea, just acknowledging for the board that this position would report under your umbrella.
Yes, Commissioners. So, this position would be a position that would report under my program management area. So, as a reminder, step back, you know, coming out of my role as the Public Information Officer, I currently continue to oversee the Board of Commissioners staff. The Sustainability Program has come over into the Board of Commissioners' office, so I'm overseeing that program. And then, this Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Coordinator will also be coming in to join that team of staff. So, frankly, I'm really thrilled about that collaboration. I think that the complementary roles of the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Coordinator with our Sustainability Coordinator, with our new Public Information Officer is really going to potentially get some momentum behind some of our 2040 communications and work and storytelling, just in a way that we haven't been able to thus far.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment. Lalea, thank you for working on this. I've been looking forward to this for 20 years.
Absolutely.
Because it's a very important role, and I think it definitely belongs in the Board of Commissioners' office, because that sends a message to the organization that we want to be inclusive in all our hirings and in all our participation in the community, especially, you know, with everything we're doing now and how important it is.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, I'm really thrilled about it.
Any other questions or comments? It looked, from a job description, it looks ambitious, and like Annabelle just said, maybe a little overdue, but...
And I'd like to add one more caveat. Just, we have to keep in mind that the burden of inclusion and diversity does not fall on this individual, it falls on the entire organization. This person there is going to be the resource to help that move it along. But, what's happened before, in my past at least, when you get appointed to one of these positions, you're expected to fill the role, and you don't have the power to fill that role in a lot of organizations. So, I think it's appropriate where it is, and let's make it work.
Yeah, yeah, I'm really... And I think that that is going to just be key in making this work advance. So, yeah, thank you for your support.
I'm excited also because of the fact that we have such a great team in terms of our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion team right now, but they have no staff capacity to back it up. So, I think that this will provide that great combination of...
Yeah.
...interest and capacity to really move us forward.
And I think leadership in this area, too. You know, having someone with the skills and the expertise, I think particularly for local government, you know. Yeah, I, yeah, I'm really excited.
Well, I would move to approve the creation and recruitment of an Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Coordinator position.
I will second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Get to work, Lalea.
Thank you, Commissioners. Will do. Thank you.
All right. Now, we are on other.
I guess I have just one small item. I shared an invitation with Joe and Greg Barret the other day from a colleague at the Oregon State University to participate in a planning grant that they're submitting to National Science Foundation on resilient communities. And in this case, it's resilient communities with respect to natural hazards.
Yeah.
And the Oregon State University Research Group has invited Lincoln County and Benton County to participate. This planning grant would just be a four-month grant, and I did hear from Greg in Joe's absence last Friday, and I did go ahead and indicate that we would be interested in pursuing, participating in that four-month planning period. If they receive a pilot grant, then there would actually be potential funding for us to help our staff participate in this process moving forward. So, it wouldn't be just one of those things where the university needs all of this time without any give back. So, the focus of the project is to consider how advanced technology, monitoring technology, might help us to be more prepared for some types of natural hazards.
And does the board have to take any action?
Do we need a motion?
No, I don't think so. It's just a...
It's just work to be done.
At this point, I don't think the board needs to take any action.
Yeah, and just a letter of saying, yeah, we support the idea, and we would be interested in participating should the award be made.
Great.
Yeah. Just wanted to let you know.
I guess I raised a question with Joe recently, and I don't have a bias, but I forget how long ago it was, we had two board meetings a week, and just raising the question, is that, are we getting the job done? The clock kind of gives a hint that, at least today, we had a very full agenda, but just putting that out there for, just to see, make sure we're not missing anything in the week that we don't have the meeting. But, having a board meeting every week, I think, is absolutely essential, and then hopefully, we don't get any busier, but...
You know, Mr. Chair, I think in the past, you know, if we've needed to add it, we could add it as, you know, depending on what has come up, and it's not hard to just go ahead and add a meeting when we need to.
Right.
As long as we have the noticing capability for a public meeting, I think that we can do that.
I would also add that in the past, typically, we would have had a work session and then a short break.
That's right. That's right. Now, we combine them.
I don't think this meeting today, for instance, is any longer than many of the meetings have been over the past several years.
That's right.
It's just that we still are combining the two, and my preference is to keep them combined.
Yeah. I think we get a lot more done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Commissioners, my response to Commissioner Malone's question was that I was satisfied with where we're at currently. I don't believe that we need to have two meetings a week, as we did initially when coronavirus pandemic hit. So, I still think once a week is fine at this point, assuming that the board feels like you're connected, you have a good pulse on what's going on, and you're getting the information that you need in a timely manner. Then, if that's the case, I would recommend that we stay with our current schedule that we're on, which is primarily once a week.
I guess the other thing, Zan and I both went to Corporal Schimmelhorn's retirement party last Friday, and had it outside at the Fulhamth Park, and good attendance. And the good news is Al will be with us on a part-time basis to continue to train his replacements. I forgot to mention, as I was giving his award... I forgot to mention, as I was giving his award, that one person is leaving but being replaced by two people, which gives you a little bit of a hint how valuable his efforts have been and will continue to be, maybe for the rest of this year. But the new people, as the saying goes, have big shoes to fill. I think Al has done King County a great service, and hopefully the new people can get up to speed fairly quickly.
When I first came, Al was kind of new into that position, but I'm amazed at how well he's developed into the position and delivered on the work. It's taken a while to build it.
Well, and that's why the new folks aren't, we can't expect them to have the same level of relationships, but hopefully with his part-time helping, the transition will help. On a personal note, Al was the field training officer when my son-in-law was a reserve for Benton County, and so I have other Al Schimmelhorn's stories.
And I feel badly I didn't get to go to that. I was battling hay fever all day on that. I'm still battling it.
Anything else for the good of the order?
I wanted to acknowledge that Al's retirement was not the only departure over this last period of time, and unfortunately, not finding the name of the employee that I didn't know personally in the Health Department that also had provided 30 years' service to the county who retired the same day, and Luis Maciel as well from Juvenile Department who moved on to Oregon Youth Authority. So it was a bit of a sad day in terms of seeing long-serving, excellent employees move on, but definitely wishing them all well in their retirement and next endeavors.
Well, I guess along those lines, I think Lynn County has a new county administrator.
Yes.
Ralph Wyatt retired a week ago or recently, and Darren, and I lost track of his last name, but he was the public works.
Oh, yeah.
Person has moved up as county administrator, and I know Darren a little bit from AMPO, so, but I think Darren has a little bit of homework to do to...
Yeah.
Somebody who had, I think, 28 years with Lynn County as their administrator, and 28 years before that in the Air Force doing kind of a similar administrative job. So I didn't know Ralph real well, but just seemed confident and pleasant. So Lynn County has a little catching up to do with a retirement like that, but...
That also brings up another issue. Ralph Wyatt, as the Lynn County Administrator, was very active in the Association of Oregon Counties and provided a lot of information to us in this area, this geography, from AOC, from the Administrator's position. So I'm hoping that we will continue to have that presence in some way, shape, or form moving forward. And transitioning to the fact that there's going to be a special session next week, August 10th, focusing on state finances, and so there will be a series of AOC meetings preparing for that. So Monday, there's a legislative session, committee session to prepare.
And I believe Darren's last name is Lane.
Yeah.
And Commissioners, I had a great working relationship with Ralph Wyatt.
Yes.
He was a class act. I will certainly miss him, and I will be meeting with Darren within the next couple of weeks to get acquainted.
Excellent.
Lots of transitions. So shall we transition to lunch?
Or to the next meeting? Yes.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all. You all.